Online. Are we on?
Help yourselves.
Some help. You gotta turn on the side. Why are we sitting next to each other?
I don't know.
This is where we were assigned.
Yes, I see. Okay, Amy.
I don't want that. Right here.
Are you sure?
Sitting, uh.
More room here.
Okay.
Yeah, I already took up half the space over here.
Check's there.
There you go, babe. City of Perkins, regular meeting Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Amy, will you, uh, call to order, roll call and establish a quorum?
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henninger is absent and Commissioner Cox is absent.
Item Agenda number two. Will you stand for prayer with me, please? Father, we just come to you tonight and we just thank you for the opportunity to be here and to serve our city in the capacity that you've led us to. Lord, I pray for wisdom tonight as we make decisions that affect our citizens. I thank you for everyone in this room and I pray your blessings upon them and I pray for our firemen, our police officers, I pray that you would always protect their backs. In Jesus' precious name, we ask these things. Amen. Number three, all the member from the high school hope squad. Come up and tell us your name, sweetheart.
Hi, my name is Amber Bear. Um, I'm here to salute the flag.
Could you, could you tell us a little bit about what Hope Squad does?
Oh, yeah. Um, Hope Squad, we're a group of peers, or we're a group of, um, kid, or, yeah. Um, we're nominated from our, uh, by our peers. Um, and we help out with people who are struggling mentally and going through hard times and we help them, uh, get through those times. Please put your hands on your hearts, please.
Thank you, dear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amber, thank you very much, sweetheart, for your time. Amber's a member of about thirteen, you said?
Yes.
And she was about the only one free tonight and I, I sent out the invitation to them because this is, uh, National Suicide Prevention Month. So, thank you, Amber. All right, uh, we're going to... Help me out with this real quick. We're gonna take a pause and switch over to the, uh, we're gonna pause the regular meeting for the City of Perkins and we're gonna switch over to the Perkins Public Works Authority Regular Meeting for Tuesday, August, September tenth, twenty twenty-four. We don't need to recall order, do we, or do we?
Yes.
Okay. Amy, can you call to order, roll call and establish a quorum, please?
Sure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henninger is absent. Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, Jason Cox is absent. And Veronica?
Yes.
All right. Item Agenda number two, consideration, consideration action on consent agenda. I, uh, I make a motion to remove Item B.
Actually, you don't have to make a motion, you can just request.
Just ask, just request.
Request yourself to, yeah.
Request that we remove Item B. Go straight to three.
Uh, no, you would go ahead and, um, do the rest of the agenda, the rest of the consent. Like, you'd need a motion on, um...
A, C, okay.
Just, you could say, uh, approve the agenda items A, B, D, and E.
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items A, C, D, N, E.
Right, she got the letters wrong.
The what?
She got the letters wrong.
I had the letters wrong.
Shoot. Okay.
Sorry. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Number three, consideration discussion of possible action on items removed from the consent agenda.
Just skip that for now if you'd like.
Well, we have to.
Well, if, are we about to prove that some of the deals missing in here? I don't think that's not where we were headed, because that's a valid idea. I like it a lot. Sorry. Okay, Ben. Uh, I don't know where you were headed, but if you want to skip number three.
Hold it. The other two commissioners don't know why we skipped it.
That is very true. I was not in there last meeting. Well, my understanding is that there is an item, um, on the agenda, number four.
PO number two, four, zero, eight, zero, two, four.
Yeah, there's a PO order for an item that, for a contract that hasn't been approved. It's number four on the agenda. My thinking, Mayor, and I'm sorry I didn't, hadn't worked this through with Rachel, but is if you go ahead and approve, if you skip two, you go down and approve the contract on four, then you can go ahead and approve the purchase orders as well.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Sorry.
Well, we didn't talk about moving the Public Works Authority in front of the city meeting until a couple hours ago. So, all right.
We're doing stuff on the fly today. So, does that make sense, um, Sarah?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Sorry to cause problems if I catch things.
No, I'm so glad that you got it. I thought that was great. Getting your team up to date.
I'm not allowed. Item Agenda number four. I don't look good in words, okay? Consideration discussion of possible action to approve contract with Spike Enterprise for wastewater, sludge, grit, and debris disposal. Rachel?
Sorry, the city manager is calling.
Is he watching?
I think you're on speakerphone. Oh, well, yeah. Sorry.
You're right.
Okay. Okay, okay. Bob says we can just give this bike, you know, it's not, I think Tammy had it all worked out.
Has to wait till next morning.
Sorry. Hi. Bike Enterprises, that's what you want to know about, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. Okay.
You have a lot on your plate. I sent Bob to phone in.
Yes, it was, he's paying attention.
Instead of being here.
Hi, Bob. Spike Enterprises is here, um, and it's all about cleaning the rest of the plant. So, we had environmental management come out and clean the big thing that's around lift station A, the bar screen. And as I understand it, from speaking a little bit with Jason Horton of Bright Water, it still let solids that shouldn't have been going through trash and such into other areas of the plant. So, there are several different receptacle type of areas, rubbing floor type of areas that need to be cleaned out. And that is my understanding of what this is. And I think our representative from Spike is here, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
David Robertson.
Mr. Robertson is here, if you all would like to ask him any questions.
Come on up. So, we're working on, we have four phases that we're gonna go through, working on lift station B, SBR number three, SBR number one in hydrovac, or?
Lift station, uh, A, lift station B.
I see that, A.
Uh, SBR one and three, correct. The way, uh, after speaking with Chuck, I believe, is out of the plant, they want to do lift station A first, which lift station A is your main inlet lift station. Uh, right now, it has about a foot of grease and sludge and buildup on it, uh, and you don't want that in there. Uh, that's just gonna require hydrovac, couple guys, hydrovac-ing it out, and disposing of it in the FEB, the large FEB lagoon retention pond that you guys have. The, there were discussions on disposing of it in the FEB or an off-site location. You can dispose of it in an off-site location. You have to obtain permits, it costs, you have trucking, there's a lot more cost involved in that, and it's a lot more intensive. The easiest thing would be put it right there into your lagoon and deal with it later. Once you, once you kind of recoup funds and kind of set aside for that and, because cleaning a retention, uh, retention lagoons can be costly, because you have to bring in dredges and i- it's time consuming. But you do them once every ten years and you're good.
And so, phase one is a one-day job?
Phase one is a one-day job. Phase two is going to be lift station one or three, whichever one they choose. Uh, they're twenty-foot wide, fifty-foot long, twenty-foot deep. As of right now, uh, number two had approximately three to four foot of sediment in the bottom. That requires hydrovac truck. You, you can use skid steer and a crane and do it quicker, but it's just as expensive. Whereas you can bring a hydrovac truck and a fire pump in and we can wash it out, vac it out, and dump it into the, uh, FEB lagoon as well. They also discussed, I guess DEQ brought up some problems with the last company that was dumping onto the rocks. We run hoses into the lagoon, so it bypasses your rocks, and even if we do dump onto your rocks, we take our fire pump and we wash whatever we, we do on there. So, when we leave, it'll be clean. That'll be a three-day job? Three-day job, a five-man crew. We are, of course, we do a lot of work for Exxon, BP, Citco, major refineries, so our safety ratings are a big priority to us, so we are very safety oriented. So, you can assure that unless it's just an act of God, we're gonna be, something that's gonna happen, because we can't take a chance of cutting, cutting corners here and losing there. So, we treat every job as if it's a refinery job, and it's done correctly, it's done safely, and it's done cleanly. Uh, after that, you have lift station B and the sett- the settling basin just adjacent to it. That's your final phase before it goes into your lagoon. Lift station B has quite a bit of solids in it, uh, even the settling basin has quite a bit of solids in it. Unfortunately, your plant doesn't filter all out. The attention on that, I believe it was a two-day on that, I think it's a total of nine days.
Right.
Um, for the entire, for the entire process, I believe, uh, it was two days for the, uh, retention lagoon in lift station B. What we'll do is we'll pump out of the retention lagoon into the main FEB, and then we'll take hydrovacs, and we'll hydrovac and wash out the lift station and the retention lagoon and discard of it in the FEB as well. It's, uh, I would like to say, to me, it's a fairly simple job, but it's time consuming, it's nasty, and it's, it's, we build on a manpower and, and equipment material basis. And unfortunately, it's a, it's a specified, uh, specific job that requires specific, uh, equipment. We, uh, we maintain Durant, Durant, Halls Valley, Bethany War Acres, we maintain several municipalities in their wastewater treatment, uh, programs, yeah. You might know somebody in Durant.
Durant.
And Midill.
Man, it's Midill.
Yeah, we, uh, just picked up Midill. That's, uh, that's gonna be fun. But, uh, yeah, so we maintain numerous municipalities around the state.
Well, I've chartered it a couple times in the last year, and I'm looking forward to seeing it after, because that was pretty disgusting.
Yeah, the company I was with previously, you and I have met before, the company that I was with previously quoted that back whenever it was still, didn't know exactly what was going on, all the regime change was going on. Uh, so I'm, I'm excited to get in and knock it out finally.
Okay. Is there, is there any leeway in the days? Are we, is it, my day's enough?
The... I push my guys.
Okay.
To get done within my timeframe.
Okay.
Nine days should be more than enough.
All right.
Uh, the... We will not shut the plant down in any way, shape, or form. The plant will be fully operational at all times. If we drain the liquids out of one and we look down and we go, oh, no, it's bad. Before, yes, we will call and say, hey, we got a problem, it's gonna be an extra day. The good thing is, if I call you and say, hey, this is gonna take an extra day, you can basically look at my, my invoice and say, well, it's just gonna be another three, whatever. Okay, that's what's gonna be the cost.
Okay.
So, your day one?
Cost is a set amount.
Time and material, yes, cost.
It's not a time and material contract. It's a flat fee contract.
Yeah, that, that's what I was trying to... That's why there's a caveat in there that says if we hit a point where it's like, whoa, we need to stop something, something really bad, really wrong, that would be, uh, brought up at that point. Unfortunately, with these being twenty-foot of water, fifteen-foot of water, I really don't know what I'm looking at in the bottom until I get it drained down. On average, this is what it's taken, so that's what I quoted.
Contract is for the total estimated cost of fifty...
Mm-hmm.
Actually, the contract is for the, the cost of fifty-three thousand.
Correct.
There is a provision that says that if you encounter scope of water changes.
Right.
And then there would be additional sums.
Correct.
From my reading in the contract, and I'm the city attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's say that you don't get it done in nine days, it takes ten. That doesn't necessarily change the, the flat fee of fifty-three thousand dollars, because the, what's, the, the nine days is timeline and anticipated duration.
And that, that's, that's the kicker, it's estimated, that is an, it's presented as an estimated, because I can't walk in and say, it's only gonna take me three days, especially not being able to see exactly what I'm dealing with. And that was one of the conversations I was having with them, saying, hey, I can't guarantee it's only gonna be three days, or, or whatever the case may be, because I don't know what's down there, and they don't know what. They don't know what's down there.
Get that the timeline is an estimate and that, that can change, so if it was eleven days, it's eleven days.
It would be eleven days. Now, the kicker to that is, is just because there's a lot more material than what your plant is telling me, I can't just give away two days' worth of work for all of my guys and all of my equipment, and I'm basically doing work for free.
Would entail a different, a change in the scope.
A cha- a change order, correct. And that's where I would stop and go, hey, Bob, we need to talk.
Right.
I need to get with you guys, this is gonna be another...
Then there can be a change in the price.
It would be a written resubmital, hey, it's gonna take me another day, it's gonna be this, you're gonna get the same submittal that I submitted before, hey, we found this during the work, this is what it's gonna take. We can essentially, at that point, if you guys say, yes, it's gotta be done, we are going to approve it, I can essentially pull one day from two over to three and finish it, and we just add that day to three. See what I'm saying?
Right.
I'm gonna continue to work.
Right.
That way, I continue to get, get it clean and go from there.
Right, the only thing I was correcting is you're saying this is a time and materials contract at estimated fifty-three thousand, because that's not what this contract is.
Right. When it was submitted as a pro- proposal, was submitted as a time and material proposal.
That out of your...
I was told to take it out by Bob, or with the email that I received, I was told to take that out. I was very, very reluctant to take that out for the simple fact of coming into this issue of, well, it's only gonna take two days, but it ends up a five-day job.
You took it out, so this is not a time and material contract.
Okay, agreed. At this point, it's not a time and material contract, it's a set price contract.
Exactly.
Okay, so we can amend it, right, if the, if that should happen?
That's why we put the caveat of, of if we find something that's just out of the scope.
All right.
So, if there's a change order, then we are bringing this back again to... It depends, I'm trying to ask the question. We can bring this back again. This is not, this is not a, a, a subject to the competitive assets of the change order, provisions would not apply to this type of contract. So, we would have to have a new contract and have a meeting.
Amendment.
And have a meeting. So, you'd have to stop what he was doing, and then we'd have to...
Not necessarily.
Okay. This is what, this is what I was wanting clarification on.
Yeah.
Okay, hang on. Yeah, of course, hold on, please. Okay, you want, which one you want? Talk to Tammy?
How long you been in the food business?
I have only been doing this for four years.
The number two business?
I've been with this company for a year and a half. I was with Safety Plus, um, for, oh, it's almost six years.
Is that four years ago?
Yes, ma'am. I was with them for four years, and then I transitioned to Spike Enterprise. Uh, the industrial tank cleaning, that's what they were built on, that's what they do. Uh, they're just able to handle more of what ICE can, can produce for what Safety Plus was. Before that, I was in law enforcement for fourteen years.
Okay. Um, so, this is, this is for the stuff that the other company that was left behind after all the other removals? Okay.
The, and I hate to say this, I know there's a lot of companies out there that are cheaper. The unfortunate reality is, when you buy the cheaper company, you get the cheaper work, and they tend to mess up, because what they're doing is they're, they're filling gaps from their main job, they're just trying to find something to, to fill gaps. This is what we do.
Right. Consent order from DEQ. I want to EQ.
So, I don't know if I can do that today, because this is the contract. Unless you want to go in and have it, we can change it and have everybody sign it, and we can make it an estimate and time and materials, and we can write on it and make it see.
I... I don't see the nine days being a problem.
Okay.
I push my guys, but I'm easy to work with. If, if we gotta settle an invoice for a week or whatever, it is what it is.
Right. We could probably, let me, let me, hold on, let me think about this. What if we... We could, we could model it like that. We already are. So, let me... So, how about we, um, have the...
After this is approved, when would you be able to start?
Would you want me to start?
That'll be a bomb answer.
I was figuring if we got it approved today, I'd figure they'd want to get started pretty quick. Essentially, I could have lift station A done by the end of the week, and then next week maybe flow into the remainder.
A day looks like a day is about three thousand dollars.
Uh, on the lift station, that's just truck and manpower, so it's a little bit cheaper. On the, uh, SBR cleaning, you're right, probably right around five to six a day, because we've got fire pump and, uh, much more additional manpower. No, that's okay, that's okay.
Some of it was hard to read, because it should have been ready.
Well, let's do that. Be a day and a half. If you can't get it done, then you don't need to do it amendment to the contract anyway. So, will that work?
Some of it's gonna depend upon how quickly the plant can actually put the one we clean back in order.
Right.
And then how they can drain that one. So, that nine days of work, that's me on-site working. That's not cleaning for three days, I need you to come back in a week. Unfortunately, that hurts me, because mobility aspects, spread it all out. I prefer it just to go back-to-back, but it's just not possible, because it takes them so long to drain it down.
Gotcha.
And then, of course, while we're in there, hey, can you inspect the lines, inspect the lines, inspect the blowers, and sure, you know, so they've got things they've gotta do as well. So, say it takes me three days, it's gonna take them two days, or me, to inspect everything, or them inspect everything and determine, well, now we gotta fix a blower now, because I know one of them has a leaky line that we've already discussed, looking at that. So, that's a day for them to do that. So, that's gonna set me another, a day that I'm not working, that my equipment will be here, and the good thing about that is, my equipment's here for a day and we're not working, I'm not charging you. Friday at five, when we leave, the equipment stays here, I'm not charging you for the equipment on the weekend, we just come back on Monday and we get started again. So, that's the good thing about that. But this is potentially going to stretch into a total two weeks timeframe. Well, maybe, maybe two and a half weeks.
But it's nine days.
Nine days of work.
Right.
Of onsite work for my company, but it could go two to three-week total timeframe because of the spacing in between the cleaning.
That makes sense.
All right. Can we make a motion on that?
One of the options you would have is to approve the contract and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment as necessary up to his spending authority of twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm happy with, I'm happy with the company choice, right?
Yes.
And we also, I'm happy with the, uh, his attitude towards us get this done, because we know you need it done, because of the DEQ consent order. So, I'm, I'm ready to approve it, with the question of, how long would it take if there is, you know, an issue and he needs more days?
That, that's what's concerned, is that he's out there working and we have to amend the contract and bring it to you.
Right.
And he has to demobilize or whatever happened.
No, if there's enough stuff out there that I can do, that I can keep working, my computer has my quote, uh, program in my computer. So, well, and that's, that's the thing, if we're having to demo, just completely shut down and demobilize, it's not benefiting you guys, because that becomes a major game changer.
I think we can avoid that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we can.
Commissioner Dickerson has a good point. If any, where's the money, is the money coming from, what's paying for it? Rachel?
We had in the capital improvement plan, uh, two hundred, hold on, what happened?
It's not coming from RPA or CARES or anything like that?
No, no, it's coming, uh, where we had the U V Bay, that's not, that's not...
Spending limit, cover in the extension, but the approval has to come, the approval has to come from the, the amendment of, of the, uh, contract. Is that correct?
The way that the ordinance is currently written regarding Bob's spending limit, it allows him to approve contracts up to, for, uh, materials and, uh, like, office supply, supplies, materials and supplies.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five thousand. If you may remember one time I met the EQ, because, um, I brought you a special... I brought you a professional services agreement. Uh, I failed to, I thought Bob could sign a professional service agreement. We look at that ordinance again and it's not there. It's not that. So at this point in time, he doesn't have authority to sign a, just any contract. Um, but we, we, we're working on change, letting, offering to you to change that, to allow him to enter into it. That's why I think I would feel better about you actually saying and authorize him to, to enter into and add a.
That's easy.
Up to, just like, right, up to.
Just threw that out because, or however much you want. If you want to say a different amount, you can. But I, I just think normal, you're kind of used to him already being able to do stuff for up to twenty-five thousand. So that's why I threw that out. You don't have to.
So, are you guys any questions?
No.
Okay. So help me word it right here, Rachel, uh, and Tammy. I make a motion that, uh, we approve the contract with Spike Enterprise for wastewater sludge, grit and debris disposal contingent on the fact that, or.
Or maybe hand authorized.
Hand authorized city manager to increase.
To amend the contract.
To amend the contract at the limit allowed by his spending limit.
That's fine.
Something like that.
I second.
Where's your bill when you need to?
You know what? Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Next time, if this isn't your agreement, bring it up before the meeting and before you sign it.
I apologize. I, I was trying to address that and it was, I was like.
It didn't matter to me.
No, it's kind of me this way. I'm like, ah.
That's all right. We got there. We got to.
Absolutely. Uh, I'm really easy to work with. So, I mean, like I said.
Thank you, sir.
It's no big deal.
Commissioner Dickerson, we, we appreciate your time.
Oh, absolutely. Once we, uh, once you approve the P O number and we re- will receive it, just email it to me. I will, uh, get with my ops manager and get with Bob and Chuck and I get, or Jason who, that, that's another thing. Bob or Jason's the.
Contact, contact Bob and he'll direct you to where you need to go. How's that?
Okay, get with him.
I'm going to get a bumper sticker that says call Bob.
Call Bob. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Have a safe trip home.
Have a good evening.
Right. Number five. Consideration, discussion and possible action to approve update to rules of decorum for Perkins Public Works Authority meetings. Amy, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, but.
Pretty cut and dry.
Yeah. A few months ago, uh, commissioners voted to remove the public appearances item from all the commissions awards and city commissions awards. And so we updated the rules of decorum to reflect that change.
And you, they also decided to use that speaker card?
Yes, you adopted the procedure, the speaker card. And also recommended deletion of those things to the other city commissions and boards.
Ladies, this is, anything?
No.
I make a motion to approve the update to rules of decorum for the Perkins Public Works Authority meeting.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number six, under new business. What?
Could we go back to number three, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me. Number three. Consideration, discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. I, ladies, do you have any questions about that? What happened?
Do not.
Do not?
Okay. Yeah, I figured it out.
Okay.
I was following.
I make a motion to approve item B under the consent agenda.
Second. Are you making me talk? Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number six, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Anything? Number seven, I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Public Works Authority regular meeting Tuesday, August, September tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
All right. You ready to reconvene the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call again? Nobody moved. I mean, I wiggled a little bit in my chair, but other than that. All right. Item number four. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Ladies, anything? I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for the regular meeting, September tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to number six. It worked out well going to that other meeting first, actually, really. Number six, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve proclamation declaring October twenty twenty-four as domestic violence awareness month. And Commissioner Dickerson is going to read it.
Hi, I'm non.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Cummings volunteered to read it. All right. Proclamation for the city of Perkins. Whereas the city of Perkins encourages positive action on the part of the community by supporting domestic violence awareness month. And whereas domestic violence awareness month is designed to support victims of domestic violence in their, in their time of greatest need. And whereas unhealthy relationships can have a lifelong negative impact on personal health, children's health. And whereas we can break the cycle of domestic violence before it starts by equipping families with skills for healthy relationships. And whereas parents, community leaders, civic organizations and schools are an integral part of providing safe, healthy and positive support system for survivors. Whereas assisting survivors is not just an investment in their future, it's an investment in Perkins, Oklahoma for generations to come. Therefore, the city commission recognizes the need to honor and support domestic violence survivors in Perkins, Oklahoma. And I, the mayor of Perkins, Oklahoma, do hereby declare October twenty twenty-four as domestic violence awareness month in the city of Perkins and urge all citizens to support the effort to increase public awareness of domestic violence and encourage assistance for domestic violence victims and survivors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to read that.
You're welcome. It's important for all of us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, item agenda number seven. Uh, consideration, discussion and possible action to open bids for, huh? Oh, yeah, sorry. We need to make a motion on that. My bad. I got in a hurry. Speedy. I make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring October twenty-two and four as domestic violence awareness month.
Second thought. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Always need somebody to put their brakes on me sometimes. Number seven, consideration, discussion and possible action to, uh, open bids for nineteen ninety-seven Ford Crown Victoria. VIN number ending ends six, six, two, nine.
Did not receive any bids.
Okay. No action? Number eight, consideration, discussion and possible action to award bid for nineteen ninety-seven. Do I have to read this?
No.
Pass. Number nine, consideration, discussion and possible action to authorize staff to list for sale nineteen ninety-seven Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number ending sixty-six, twenty-nine.
So in the past, when we've had items that received no bids, we have listed them on one of the governmental auction websites such as Purple Wave. There are others and right now I don't remember the rest of the other names, but anyway, list them on one of those auction websites so that we can get whatever we can out of them.
These are the ones that was supposed to go someplace else, but they didn't want it?
No, this is the one that all along just.
Okay, gotcha. Ladies? I make a motion to authorize staff to list for sale nineteen ninety-seven Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number ending in six, six, two, nine.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
So what you're saying is I'm going to have to read everything twice tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay. Number ten, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve updates to rules of decorum for city commission. Basically the same, huh, Amy? It's the exact same. Ladies?
Not at all.
Nope.
I make a motion to approve updates to rules of decorum for city commission.
Second thought. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
What about number eleven? Okay, got to do it. I got you. Had to reread it. Consideration, discussion and possible action to recommend the updates to the rules of decorum for all city board and commission agendas to encourage consistency between entities.
So this is because you also recommended when we deleted that item, the public appearances item from all the agendas. You also recommended, um, or you all also recommended that we apply that to all boards and commissions. And so just to be consistent with this change as well.
Absolutely. I remember that. Remember that meeting. Ladies?
Very good.
I make a motion to recommend the updates to the rules of decorum for all city board and commission agendas to encourage consistency between entities.
Second thought. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Veronica?
Yes.
Number twelve, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five city of Perkins five-year capital improvement plan. Rachel?
First of all, thank you very much for your patience this year. I've had personal, family and mental issues. And I thank you for allowing me to be several months late on this deal. So I appreciate that. So you're holding in your hot little hands.
This is what your twenty-five capital improvement plan.
With tabs. The way it's broken down is this year twenty-five, you'll see the different categories of funds, those different buckets of money that we use. Then when you look at the next year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, um, they, I just put everything together there. So it's not broken up by funds there. So the first for capital improvement, you've seen this before because you did see this year twenty-five presented in conjunction with the budget. So you've seen all this before. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. One thing that I did want to address is some of this, the items that we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant, the UV bay. There were some changes in ways to attack that process and I believe that it's coming in under what we had budgeted originally, that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar number. So that's where like the money for Spike Enterprise is coming from. That's on the capital improvement sales tax. It's the first page with the tab and you'll see that in two hundred and fifteen. Um, other than that, there haven't been any changes to other items in the capital improvement plan for this year that I can think of right off the top of my head. Anybody have questions about any of it?
No, I read it all.
Oh, bless your heart. And it was a living document, so as things change, as things break and we have to bring it back. And, uh, I talked to you about it.
You did a good job. Thank you. Nice.
I do like how you added the, the, uh, the play sales tax. And, uh, I just thank the citizens for voting for that.
Absolutely. And we got our first, we got our first rebalance of that this month.
I do like, I, I do like how the department heads seem very thorough with, with, uh, their goals and what they'd like to have done and, and, uh, even did a good job with, this is what we want, but we don't know how to pay for it yet.
And you know, I feel just more so for those watching, uh, it will be uploaded once it's been approved and in the back. We have our accomplishments and I'm really proud of all the things that we've done over the course of the last few years. And those are listed by fiscal year in the back, so.
Yeah, those were very interesting to see where even like, you know, it goes a couple of years before us. So good job. I bet that's very tedious. Yeah, you are tedious. Commissioner Dickerson, do you have anything to say?
No. But I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five city of Perkins five-year capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Just for you.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
I'm so proud. Number thirteen, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding progress and performance on strategic plan goal number five. Partnerships nurture and establish cooperative agreements, including commissioner attendance at Perkins Trias School Board, Chamber of Commerce and Iowa Tribe meetings or events. Possible new partnerships and organization and other efforts to strengthen and nurture local relationships and community development. It has my name on there. It's Tammy. So I have decided that if that's just a discussion, uh, I think it would be, uh, beneficial if my partners went to schoolwork meetings and I went to other places.
Absolutely.
Just dual roles are hard to separate. I might, I mean, it's just hard.
Um, I looked at that first.
Do what?
I was just looking and I saw their schedules. It's on Mondays.
I've already, I, I get invited all the time to the, uh, to Iowa tribe events and meetings. And I think need to, I think it's hard for some of us at work to be able to go to the chamber lunches, but I think Bob or when, somebody usually tries to go to, to cover that. Commissioner Cox did tell me that he would be willing to go to some school board members, I mean, school board meetings. But we need to remember that it's, our, our goal was once quarterly. So it's not every month. So it's not like we're infringing on, we're there for support in any group. Is that what you would say, Tammy?
Yeah, and, um, just to give a little context, um, in your overall plan, the, the goals and performance measures that you set for each other addressed each, you know, attendance of each of those types of meetings and so much more.
Right.
And, um, so we, I, um, when the mayor brought this to my attention, I pulled those pages out of the strategic plan just so y'all can review them and remind yourselves of what the measures are. But, and that was.
So I did it right? Ladies, anything?
We've got my schedule and I'm going to go ahead.
Okay.
Mayor, if there's any way that Amy or I could assist?
I don't know.
Right.
I understand. If we can help, please.
Right. I think it's just, it's, I mean, we all went to that strategic meeting, those meetings and it was fourteen months long in various.
It was a lot.
Late nights, um, and I, my goal this summer was to like get it started. That's why high school and I went. And I, I just think it's, it's sometimes it's new to almost everyone, but we just, the, the way we're growing the community relationships, you have. That's why high school and I went, and I, I just think it's, it's sometimes it's new to almost everyone, but we just, the, the way we're growing the community relationships, you have, you can't say you're gonna do it, you have to take action on it. And you have to foster those relationships, you just can't say you want one. So you have to put in, you have to put in the time, even though we get paid so much. I did, I'm just joking. No, it does, it takes time to foster relationships, like any relationship, so that was my goal this summer, was just kind of get it started, like, and hopefully got the ball really on that.
You've done an amazing job, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Do we need to make a, uh, any decision on that?
No, that was just a sk- I think it was just consideration, discuss.
Well, no, we let it be actually.
Did we say action?
Well, it said regarding the process. Says regarding the process and performance. Did, did we need to put in there, like, put it in the agenda item when a commissioner did go to a meeting and maybe simply report back, say, I went, it was great, this is what happened, or?
Oh, we were supposed to do that anyways.
Record that.
Yeah, according to the.
Well, that's what I, I mean. I, I, did we, we talked about it, but I don't know that it was written down in the strategic plan, I'm trying to remember.
I'm not sure it is, because you reported on something that you went to earlier.
Right.
Because of the plans that were before.
Okay. I just need to know if there's a motion on this that we need to make. And since we're still in discussion mode. I don't want to move it to another month, but I almost feel like when we're, when we're talking about this, we're talking about our whole team, and I know there's extenuating circumstances tonight, while the rest of our team couldn't be here, but I certainly don't, I don't know, what do you think about that? We have a quorum, so it's not that big.
I was supposed to say action? I'm just thinking that it sounds like the action would be like in the future to have an agenda item where you can report on meetings during the quarter. Sounds like.
Okay.
That you've attended, and I don't know that you really need to do a motion on that, we can just.
Cause we've already done it twice.
Already in the.
We've already done it.
I didn't realize it was.
Okay.
I've gone to it.
Sounds like that's what you're, I mean, if you want to do a motion to have agenda item, but I don't know that it's necessary.
So we can just move to fourteen? Okay, number fourteen.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to move to a different number perhaps?
Yes. I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, where were we?
One-fourteen.
Thirteen. Yeah, move to one-eighteen?
We can move to this one, so I can go. Where do you want me to move to?
Eighteen, please.
Eighteen?
Yes, please.
Then we'll come back to fourteen, to seventeen. Number eighteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve, approve resolution ten-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution adopting policies and procedures for the fixed asset program.
Okay. This is all part of the riveting world of finance. Fixed assets are those items that cost more than whatever amount has been established by the city. They get entered into a separate program, if you will, um, and they're fixed assets, and they depreciate over time, and then when we need to surplus those for whatever reason, they need to come to you, and you need to do that. So we, we had followed, of course, state law, we followed our ordinances, but we never actually had a written policy for this is what we do, this is how we do it. So, and this is going to be a part of that bigger purchasing policy that we continue to try to work on. So fixed assets, this has been reviewed, Bruce Luttrell was our auditor for twenty-nine or thirty years, I, we were never quite sure which one. He retired three or four years ago from auditing, but he still prepares our estimates every year, that's that budget that we have to give to the county.
Okay.
So he has a wealth of experience, he helped, he reviewed this for me, um, Tammy reviewed it for us, and then I also went ahead and sent it to our current auditor, who by law cannot give us advice, but she can also, she can tell us, no, don't do that, that's not okay.
Okay.
And so it's gotten the seal of approval from all of those people, and this is, this is what it is. Do you have specific questions about the policy?
I don't. Sarah, Veronica?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, I, I read it already.
You started with this, this started from another state, did it? It did, it came out of, um, the state of Washington, a town, I don't remember what the name of the town was, but I started with theirs because I thought that was pretty succinct, it wasn't overly complicated. Somebody with a finance degree like myself could understand it, and so.
That's a good place to start.
I like the fact that you even included appreciation.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be helpful to refer to, and that it's written down. And some of the pieces were in our financial statements, that last chunk actually came out of our financial statements already, but now it's in one place, so I'm not looking at code here and looking at what have we done for years in the past there, and looking at what's in the financial reports and things else, it's all.
So your, your boss has, has told me that, uh, you're a rock star and how much hard work you worked on this, you put forth on this, so we're just, I believe we just can't keep up with you. Ladies, you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Nope. Uh, I make a motion, a mo-?
Motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution, uh, ten-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution adopting policies and procedures for the fixed asset program.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number nineteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution eleven-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution authorizing hiring incentive for certified firefighters.
We have been doing, um, hiring incentive for the police officers for a few years now, Bob came up with that plan, and, you know, I think it is, I think it has helped attract officers that were already clean, certified. So when, um, we had a vacancy in the fire department, I was trying to think of, gosh, how can we get people to apply, and I thought, oh, why don't we do the same?
This saves us money in the long run.
It will.
In time.
Time.
Basically manpower time is what it saves us.
Absolutely, absolutely, because we're gonna have somebody come in who can hit the ground running, so it takes almost a year to get them started.
We don't have to lose them for a weekend, a day, or two weeks, or go to a conference, I got it.
Chief, Chief Bar, uh, Chief Bar is the one who, who guided me in how to break it up on the different types of training, so that it could be, okay, so if you're a volunteer firefighter, they've only got X and Y, then they can get a little chunk of money for just having X and Y, and if it's somebody who has it all, yay them, they get the whole amount of money.
I do like the step on it, I hope.
Yeah, so, um, I appreciate his, his guidance there on that, so, um, that's, that's what we're hoping.
Ladies, do you have any questions?
Nope, I love it.
Nope.
I like it.
I love it all.
Uh, I make a motion to approve resolution number eleven-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution authorizing hiring incentive for certified firefighters. Helps keep them too.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution adopting a code of ordinances and bi- biennial supplement thereto for the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, and repealing permanent and general ordinances not included in the code. Amy?
State law dictates that we have to supplement our ordinance book or, um, qualify the code of ordinances every two years and publish a biennial supplement, so the resolution just shows that we did that.
Well, that's pretty straightforward. Says you like, gotta have multiple copies in the office and one at the county?
Yeah.
All right, ladies, any questions? I make a motion to approve resolution twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-four. A resolution adopting a code of ordinances and biennial, uh, supplement thereto for the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, and repealing permanent and general ordinances not included in the code.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-one, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution thirteen-dash-twenty-twenty-four. City of Perkins bond schedule. That's why Tiffany's sitting in the back.
Good evening.
Sitting here quietly, just waiting for her. This was pretty intense.
It is. All the way up to the place. Um, so the passage of ordinance five-oh-four in August prompted the bond schedule to be updated, that, um, affected the school zone fines. And so Trevor Hammond, the prosecutor slash city attorney, reviewed the schedule once I updated it, um, and he says it's ready to go, I believe Tammy's also reviewed it. So those are your changes.
Did you type all that?
Many years ago.
You just went in and was able to have that thing. I was like.
But yes, I did put it all together.
I was, like, I wonder who typed all that, but I get it now. It's a good thing it was still in the computer. Ladies, any questions? None?
I mean, I got lots, but that's the, you know, coming out of me, so it's, I. I'm, hon- honestly, I'm just wondering, some charges are cheaper, or what, some fines are lower than other fines, which I would.
It is, it's probably dictated by statute.
Okay.
In the, if you look up the ordinance, the statute will be listed under the ordinance.
Correct.
Got you.
That just still baffles me.
So, so.
Still baffles me.
So the city cannot have a fine greater than the state statute allows.
Right.
So. Okay. Is there any specific thing you want me to answer?
No, cause that could be a whole conversation.
Okay.
Doesn't, doesn't need to be, okay, here. Nothing we can do about it, so it's just curiosity conversation.
I would be happy to, to try and do whatever you want to answer any questions you have.
Absolutely, thank you.
I like that, a curiosity conversation.
Yeah, just curious.
Okay. Veronica, anything?
Nope.
Tiffany, thanks for your work. Rachel, did you have anything to say?
No, ma'am.
Your name was there, so I was making sure.
Well, that was just in case, just in case, but she is, as always.
Or Tiffany. I make a motion to approve resolution thirteen-twenty-twenty-four, City of Perkins bond schedule.
I'll second it. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-two, thank you Tiffany.
Quickly. You're new to Tiffany, she is as much a person as Rachel is, as much an asset for the city, so.
Yes, thank you.
If there's a question that you have, she can answer it, so. Or call.
Thank you, Tammy.
She's on the hall. Number twenty-two, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve contact, contract with Collins, Zorn, and Wagner P L L C. Provision of legal services related to the city's claims and possible litigation against KW Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwell Section Nine Infrastructure Improvement and Drainage Issues.
At the last meeting, you guys directed me to obtain this contract, and it is on your agenda and in your pocket.
Any questions?
The last meeting, I was not here for.
But this, this, this was, this subject was the item of discussion at the lap of the executive session at the last meeting, and it will be at the executive session in a few minutes, so.
I, I read all of the lawyer papers.
Huh?
Look it up. Ladies, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve contract with Collins, Zorn, and Wagner P L L C for the provision of legal services related to the city's claims and possible litigation against KW Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwell Section Nine Infrastructure Improvement and Drainage Issues.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-three, make, uh, motion to enter executive session.
Before you do that, would you go back to number fourteen? Do you want us to do execu- you want to do executive session first?
I want your, if Commissioner Cox is still.
We can do that, okay, I'm sorry.
I, I would like to.
But that makes sense.
Yeah, I would like to.
Let's just remember to do it.
Oh, we will.
Okay.
We will.
Okay, sorry about that.
So, no, you're fine. Rachel and I may not have talked to you, but it's been crazy. Twenty-three, motion to enter executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three-oh-seven B four to discuss the city's claims and possible litigation against KW Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwell Section Nine Infrastructure Improvement and Drainage Issues.
I'll second that. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Bring it next time.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You are or I am?
Yes, please.
All the spotlight.
Nineteen thirty-eight.
Well, I'm so happy, cause I forgot to fill it twice during the adjournments. Are we back on? Yes, okay.
She made a motion to.
Yes, she did.
Amy, you ready? Number twenty-four, uh, motion to exit executive session and reconvene in open session. And Commissioner Cox is here with us.
I make a motion to reconvene?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number twenty-five. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
I second.
Thank you.
Just moving to Mayor's motion, that was your motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-five, consideration, discussion, and possible action as a result of executive session regarding claims and possible litigation against KW Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwell Section Nine Infrastructure Improvement and Drainage Issues. Are you ready for my motion?
I'm ready.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, direct the city attorney to proceed with what was discussed during executive session.
A second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Amy, we're gonna go back to, uh, fourteen through seventeen. Number fourteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance number five-oh-five, an ordinance amending title for health and sanitation. Chapter three, garbage and refuse, section four-dash-three-dash-five, container requirements, and declaring an emergency.
Since Rachel's not here, I think if you looked at the, the ordinance, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Is.
Adding a provision that you have to add the trash before you put it in your container.
I did have one question because I did not see it on the ordinance.
I did have one question because I did not see it on the ordinance. Um, if the ordinance is not followed by community members, are, is it gonna be enforced with the code and fines, or is? Yes. There is, okay, so this is, uh, session four dash, or title four, chapter three, section five. As I recall, it's either title four or chapter three that has a penalty provision at the end. I can look it up if you want to know exactly what it says, that there is a penalty provision that applies to all of the, all of the requirements under that code. I was just more curious if there was, so people didn't, you know, gonna get in trouble if I don't do it, take it seriously. It is something now that the, essentially code enforcement.
Right. Officer Bradley went to the training and started.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions? I make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, five oh five, an ordinance amending title four, health and sanitation, chapter three, garbage and refuse, section four dash three dash five, container requirements, and declaring an emergency.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number fifteen, consideration discussion and possible action on declaring emergency on ordinance five oh five. I make a motion to declare an emergency on ordinance five oh five.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number sixteen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number five oh six, an ordinance amending Perkins City Code Title Two, Revenue, Finance, and Business, Chapter Two, Purchases of Supplies, Materials, and Equipment, Section Two Dash Two Dash One, City Manager to Purchase Prior Approval Required and Declaring an Emergency. Tammy?
Yeah, my name is put on this because Bob's not here, but it's just really his request, and it is, um, because, uh, the ordinance as it currently stands allows him to, uh, contract for, for supplies and materials purchases up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but it does not allow him to contract for professional services for twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, he's asking that this ordinance be amended to give him the ability to, to do both.
That's gonna speed some things up.
Make it flow better.
So, it's, it did take a whole lot to, you know, change like, three words in that ordinance, but you can see where that puts down.
Any, commissioners, anybody?
I make a, I make a motion to approve ordinance number five zero six, an ordinance amending Perkins City Code Title Two, Revenue, Finance, and Business, Chapter Two, Purchases of Supplies, Materials, and Equipment, Section Two Dash Two Dash One, City Manager to Purchase Prior Approval Required and Declaring an Emergency.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number seventeen, consideration discussion and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance number five oh six. I make a motion, uh, I make a motion to declare an emergency on ordinance number five oh six.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox, for helping get that done.
You're welcome.
Moving on to number twenty-six, uh, new business under the Open Meeting Act. This agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Nothing? Number twenty-seven, I make a motion that we adjourn the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We'll adjourn.
I wasn't ready.
I'm trying to prepare myself for that.
I was ready.